I now call to order the August 21st, 2023, meeting of the New County Independent Schools, District Board of Trustees at 6:02 PM. Let the minutes show that a forum was present with all members, with six members in attendance, with one absence, Ms. Tompkins. Please rise for the invocation be given by Ms. Harrell. And on the pledge allegiance and on the Texas flag be given by Mr. Mixon.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, our allegiance to the D.C., one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, item two on the agenda is public hearing on the New County ISD 2023-2024 budget and 2023 tax rate presented by Ms. Chalit.
Okay, good evening. We're going to start off with the tax rate, since that is what is included in the budget as well. For the tax rate, last year's maintenance and operations tax rate was .9430. This year, the proposed tax rate is .7575, which is a decrease of 18.55 cents over last year's rate. The interest and sinking rate will remain constant at 50 cents. So, prior year combined tax rate was 1.4430, and this year, the proposed is 1.2575. So, it is a decrease in the maintenance and operation tax rate. When you go to adopt it later on, legislature does make you say, you're going to read something about it being a .98% effective increase in the rate. Basically, if the tax rate, none of the laws would have changed with that tax rate, it was effectively .98% higher than last year's to get the same revenue. But it is actually a decrease in the tax rate of 18 cents, a little more than 18 cents. Now, for the budget, we're going to talk about the general fund budget first. Local revenues is $62,536 being proposed, $137,105 for state, and federal 2.1 million, for a total of $201,791. The expenditures are also $201,791, making the general fund budget be a balanced budget. That budget was based off of a 17,433 average daily attendance, at a $7,671,696,000 property value, at 97% collection rate, and the .7575 MNO tax rate. On the child nutrition fund, the local revenues of 2.1 million, state revenues of 365,000, and federal revenue of 10.8 million, for a total revenue of 13.3 million, expenditures of 7.6 million, almost 7.7 million, for a planned drawdown of 4.3 million. This is a planned drawdown for some capital improvements and things to get the fund balance down on the child nutrition fund. The debt service fund, the revenues is $44,038, and the expenditures is $44,038 for a balanced budget on the revenues. On the accelerated education budget, this is our pick 24 for our state comp ed program at the high school. The revenues are $5,758.778, and the expenditures are $5,758.778 for a balanced budget for the accelerated budget. Are there any questions?
Okay. Any questions? Item three on the agenda is consideration of adoption, the 2023-2024 accelerated education budget.
Okay, so that's the one that I just told you about with the state comp ed money and it being a balanced budget.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Motion has been moved to second. There being no further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is approved. Item four on the agenda is a consideration of adoption of the 2023-2024 general fund, child nutrition, and debt service budgets presented by Ms. Chalit.
And once again, the general fund and the debt service fund are both balanced budget. The child nutrition fund has a planned drawdown.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the 2023-2024 general fund, child nutrition, and debt services budget? Motion has been moved to second. There being no further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is approved. Item five on the agenda is consider, adopt, and set by order resolution, the 2023 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operations, .7575 per hundred valuation, and for debt service, .05 per hundred valuation. .05 per hundred.
Yes.
.0.
0.5.
Okay. Mine says .05.
He is right.
.50 per hundred valuation presented by Ms. Brandy Chalit.
Yes, and once again, this is a decrease in the tax rate by over 18 cents. Your motion will say it's effectively an increase, but the tax rate itself is actually being decreased by 18, over 18 cents.
Okay, so for clarification, we were at 1.44, and we are now at 1.25.
Yes, and the 7.5, 1.2575 is, yes.
Even though this motion says it's an increase, it is a decrease.
Yes.
So, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of tax rate of 1.2575, which is effectively a 98% increase in tax.
.98.
.98% increase in tax rate.
Yes.
Motion been moved to second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item six on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. We have one person, Mr. Jason McCauley. Before you begin, I have to read a statement. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed in tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during this meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Policies are available on the district website at www.nukanyisd.org. Harrell?
Yeah.
You have five minutes, sir.
Thank the board for their time. Apologize for my attire. I had to leave work to make this meeting. We're concerned about the school bus overcrowding with my daughter's school bus. We live in the Oakley addition. She attends Pine Valley Middle School, and she's had to sit on the floor of the bus several times, as well as other students. As well as other students have had to sit on the floor on the way home. It doesn't seem to be in the mornings, seems to be in the afternoon. We have spoken with Leah at the school bus barn, who I guess is over the logistics for Pine Valley, and she said she would look into it in week one. And during week two, we called multiple times and have been unable to reach anyone, to be honest with you, and have not gotten a call back. And, I mean, I don't have to tell you guys how concerning it is to have students sitting on the floor of the bus. So, would appreciate you guys looking into that, and thank you for your time.
Item seven on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members. Item eight on the agenda is superintendent report presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. And I've asked our digital learning and our curriculum departments to come present to y'all some things that are going on in those two areas of the district. And so, I've got Ms. Cobb's and Dr. Luttrell, as well as their fearless leader, Ms. Schafter, and their whole team. I'm still honored to introduce them. So, I don't know who's going first. Lasagna, digital learning's up first, and so, going to tell you what's going on.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. We're excited to share what we do in the digital learning department, how we support students and teachers on their campuses. So, first of all, going to share, this is the information that we're sharing, and you also have a copy of the presentation in front of you. We're going to go, I'm going to introduce our team, tell you our primary focus, our goals, and the resources that we support in the district. I'm Lasagna, and Krista Kaiser is the coordinator of digital learning, Kim Munoz is instructional technology specialist, and Charissa Scott is also an instructional technology specialist. So, our primary focus in the digital learning department is to work alongside teachers to enhance lessons with technology to increase student achievement. We know that nothing can replace high-quality instruction from teachers, and our goal is to collaborate with teachers to help them increase student achievement by enhancing their lessons with technology. And we just want to reiterate that the Chromebook is not a replacement for teachers, it's a tool that we use in the classroom to help enhance student achievement. So, our goals for this year are to build positive relationships with administrators, staff members, and media specialists. We want them to know how we can support them and the students on their campus. We're going to create presentations and training materials for our core programs. That's Canvas, NearPod, Book Creator, and all of our Google Suite. We're going to provide training and support so that the media specialists have the knowledge and skills to support their campus. Our campus media specialists are the people on campus every day that support teacher with integrating tech into their lessons. And then, we're going to develop tech skills by grade level for students and a tech skill guide for teachers. So, the new testing requirements have made it critical for our students to be proficient in academic tech skills. We know that students are proficient in their personal technology usage, such as video games and things like that, but it's a little bit different for academic tech skills. For example, our students in second and third grade are going to have to type on the STAR test and Tellpass, and so, it's a little concerning that we have second graders that are going to be having to type responses. And our SAT and ACT are also now online, and everything that we're doing is just to help prepare our students and help them be prepared in any test that they take. These are the resources that we support, district resources provided by the digital learning department. Our campuses do purchase additional resources that they choose. They have a choice in what they use in their classrooms and what the campuses purchase. We work with the committee to develop our top three resources, our core focus, which is Canvas, NearPod, and Book Creator. And the reason why the committee chose that, the committee was made up of administrators, and they went back and got feedback from campuses. It was other campus members on the team also. Those resources help our students learn and practice what they're going to see on STAR, but not in a testing format. So, it's practice for every day. Canvas is our district learning management system. I like to tell people, think of it as like a digital file cabinet. It's a way for us to house all of our curriculum resources, such as textbooks, assignments, class information, and house them in one system to create easier access for students. So, it's everything in one place. It essentially becomes a one-stop shop for our students, so they're not going to multiple places to have to look for information. And Canvas also provides teachers a way to access on-demand professional development when needed. So, it's there for them. If they need support on something, they can go in and find different courses that are available. That's it for me, unless you have questions. Yes, ma'am.
So, I am not a technology person at all. Just grabbing at work today, but I wish we'd go back to paper charts. I'd be happy, happy for me. When my kids would have all their digital stuff, and they'd bring that Chromebook to me, and they'd be like, hey, Mom, let's, I don't know what the heck they're doing. Is there support for parents who need to know how to manage these things and who are technology savvy like me? Are there people we can call and say, hey, we need help?
Yes, so your teachers, we refer back to the classroom teachers for questions, because every teacher is utilizing the materials in a different way, so it looks a little different. Your teachers are going to be able to give you the best information, but there's a campus media specialist that's available, and if you need help with walking through, all you have to do is reach out to the media specialist, and they'll be happy to walk parents through, get them logged into the digital learning resources, or answer any questions to explain about anything that they have a question about.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Any questions?
Thank you. So, Dr. Luttrell, Dr. Cindy Luttrell is the director of curriculum and instruction.
So, I want to thank you for your dedication to our school district and for the opportunity to talk to you today about the curriculum and instruction department. I have all these wonderful people with me here, and the first thing I want to do here in a minute is introduce each of them. I also want to just give you kind of general information about what we do in the curriculum and instruction department, a little glimpse into the Canvas curriculum courses, and then we want to share the instruction guide with you, which you actually have in your folders along with the slide presentation. So, here's my team. They're kind of mixed here, the way they're standing, but I'm going to introduce them in the way that they're standing, so that will make more sense to you. So, we have Leslie Spro. Leslie is our K-12, so all grade levels, social studies specialist. Amazing. I would like to say before I continue, because I forgot, I'm really jumping right into all these people I love so much, but we have a total of 231 years in education as a group, and each of these coordinators or specialists is an expert in their content, their grade level, or their program that they support. Each one of them was an amazing teacher before they came to us, and each one of them was a leader on a campus. So, every one of them was either an instructional coach, a media specialist, well, they weren't student success coaches, because we just added that recently. They were, I have some that were multilingual coaches, some that were APs, assistant principals, some that were department heads. So, every single one of them was a leader on a campus before they became a leader in the district. So, we have Leslie. Then we have Denise Weatherford. Denise is our secondary science specialist. We have Michelle Romero. Michelle Romero is our specialist for pre-K and kindergarten. Then we have Claudia Terrell. Claudia is our reading academy cohort leader for the reading academies, and we'll talk more about that in just a minute. Anita Elizondo, she's our 3-5 reading language arts specialist for, yeah, grades three through five. We have Leo Rios. Leo is our secondary math specialist, and by secondary, every time I say secondary, that's grades six through 12. So, they have lots and lots of responsibilities. We have Amy Gilbert. Amy is our first and second grade specialist, all content areas. Who's beside, okay. We have Jillian Trim. Jillian is our 3-5 elementary math specialist and science. Then we have Maria Martinez. Maria is our SLA Spanish Language Arts Specialist for elementary, grades K through five. We have Ashley Lang. Oh, my goodness, okay? I know everybody, and I see them every day, but this is a test. So, I have Ashley Lang. Ashley Lang is our secondary language arts specialist, so reading language arts for secondary grades six through 12. We have Simone Barnes. Simone Barnes is our CCMR, College Career Military Readiness Specialist. That was a new position for us this year, and we're excited to have that addition. And then finally, we have Hannah, Hannah Holohose, and Hannah is our Advanced Academics GT CCMR coordinator. So, that's the team. They're amazing. Okay, so elementary, secondary, I think I went backwards. Okay, so what do we do? So, all these people, what do we do? Our main job is to support. We support our campuses in lots of different ways. Primarily, we support our teachers, but we support our teachers because they support our kids. I believe that our teachers are the most important people in our district, and every one of us is here to support them, and that's what we do. We support our teachers to improve their instructional practice so that our students can be successful. We do that by supporting our instructional coaches, who work with them every day on their campus and through professional development, either as requested by principals or through our district professional development days, which are on our calendar. We support our instructional coaches and help them learn and grow so that they can support our teachers. And finally, we support our principals and all of the leadership people on the campus. So, every campus has an instructional leadership team that the principal creates, and it usually includes principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, can include counselors, you know, just whoever the principal feels like should be on that team. And so, we support everybody on that team in terms of curriculum and instruction. And then, we also create the district level assessments. So, this team creates assessments for pre-K 12, and when we look at 312, those assessments are aligned to the STAR test. After each district level assessment, we call them bundle and CBA tests, and after those tests, we provide to our administrators a summary of assessment, summary of major assessments, so that they can use that data then, although they have access to all kinds of data, but our summary will give suggestions on what we can do on the standards that our kids are struggling with. So, we do create those and support those. It's our responsibility to stay current with what's going on with the Texas Education Agency, as well as best practice, that whatever the research says, it's our responsibility to stay current with that. And then, with that information, we'll be able to provide high-quality assessment or research-based support for our campuses. We review, recommend, and support all of the instructional resources in our district for pre-K 12. The state requires that for anything that has a TEACs, that has a set of standards, we have to, as a district, provide resources for that. So, we take very seriously our responsibility to review those materials, recommend, and then, in the end, support with professional development or whatever we need to have on our campuses so that people can use them effectively. And then finally, we develop the curriculum documents. So, we have in our Canvas curriculum course documents that are available to our campuses to guide instruction. This is just a snip of it, but every campus leadership team, which the principal leads, determines the focus instructional of their campus. We provide resources to support that, so they can choose from the curriculum courses as to what parts of that they want to use, but we just provide everything that we can. We underwent an audit summer before last on our reading language arts, which we got great results on, but we're always looking for what we can do to better support our Finally, you have instruction guide in front of you. This instruction guide is actually not for just curriculum and instruction, but it's for the entire instruction team, and it's for our entire department. There is a table of contents in the front, and at the back, you know, in education, we use so dang many acronyms, it's crazy, right? I think everybody is nowadays, but we're really probably the worst at it. And so, the very back is a whole list of all those acronyms and what they mean, and then in between, the table of contents and the acronym list, is everything that we have available to support our campuses and our teachers. So, what's best practice, what will help your kids to be successful? And if you need backing, because I know some of our instructional coaches will reach out to us and say, where is it written that, I got an email today, where is it written, the number of minutes for elementary? And it's, I mean, just about anything you want to find about our district instructional is in that instruction guide. Thank you for your time.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So, just a quick little example, so when you say support, can you give me an example, like Mr. Rios, if he's dealing with something from our secondary, how does true support look like? Do they pick up the phone and say, I can't do a math problem?
Well, no, because.
What does the support look like?
Yeah, so let's talk about that. So, this department, sometimes, yes, sometimes that will happen. So, Rios does sometimes go to campus during planning if somebody's really struggling with something. He is great about going in there and providing that support. But we also really want to grow and support our instructional coaches, because instructional coaches, just like Lasagna said, the media specialist, every campus has a media specialist, every campus has at least, well, they have two instructional coaches now. And so, those coaches are the people that we grow and we support because they're every day. We can't be there every day. We have 20 campuses to support. And so, we really try to grow our instructional coaches on the campuses to provide that support. However, there are things where we do actually reach out directly to teachers, and one of the things that I mentioned that I'd say, and I didn't yet, is about reading academies. So, reading academies have been kind of a hot issue lately because teachers were required, it's required for all K-3 teachers and administrators. And until this year, our teachers had to do that work at night or on the weekends, but the TEA is requiring us now to do what they call a comprehensive model. And so, we have right now about 83 teachers that are signed up for the reading academies, and it's all face-to-face, in-person during the school day. And then, they're also, in addition to that, going to have coaching. So, Claudia, who's down there, is our reading cohort leader, is going to provide that coaching as well. So, expertise from people that are experts in the field of how to teach reading are going to be working with those teachers. So, support can look really different. So, sometimes, it's professional development that we provide, sometimes, it's us going out, because we really are on-call. Our people go out, they're on campuses, they want to see planning on the campus, they want to see PLCs, the professional learning communities. We've been going into classrooms a lot lately and seeing teachers in practice to see if things are working. And I'll tell you, it's very exciting, because I know how hard these people work. I was a specialist in this district for nine years, eight years, eight years before I became the director, and the specialists work and coordinators work very hard, and to see those things in practice happening in a classroom is exciting, because you do see that. Teachers are taking what we provide, and they're using it in their classroom.
Because it seems like if he notices something that's not, maybe not necessarily right, and he can go to those instructional coaches and say, hey, this is what I see, let me teach.
So, we really do that. So, like, you know, my background is math and science, so we really do that. If we see something that's concerning, we reach out to the instructional coach. I mean, if something was really severe, we would reach out to the principal, of course, but generally, our first line is to talk to that instructional coach so that they can support, because there's no better professional development than somebody that's there, side-by-side, working with you, that can help you really in your practice. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
The resources that are provided for, I guess, the student or the teachers to teach from are specifically focused on the TEACs, correct?
Yes, sir, they're required to.
And they are required to use these?
Yes.
So, they go out and get their own resources?
So, our district provides resources. We have to, we have to sign this paper that says we provide resources as a district for every curriculum course that has TEACs. We're required to do that, and so, we do. So, the district pays for those resources. However, campuses also have some of their own funds, and so, they can buy additional funds, additional resources if they want to. No teacher in our district should have to be buying anything with their own personal money. I mean, they could, but they shouldn't have to, because we really have everything that they need.
But those items are still reviewed and approved, like, as far as if they're in line with the TEACs?
They are aligned with the TEACs, yes. We won't choose anything that's not aligned with the TEACs. And in elementary, we won't choose anything that's not in both Spanish and English, because we have a dual-language program. So, the alignment with the TEACs is critical. I don't think, when the State Board of Education used to approve resources, you only had to have 50% coverage. That was several years back. But currently, anything that we purchase, that's one of their jobs, is to really look at those resources and make sure they are in line with the TEACs. No resource is perfect, it's the teacher that makes the difference. It's not the resources, and we know that, but anytime we see something that has like a gap or something that's missing, we let our campuses know about that, or we supplement with something else.
What is the resource?
So, when you talk about curriculum, curriculum is the TEACs. A res- A resource is something that supports the TEACs. So one of our resources is like STEM Scopes Math. We've had that in the district for many, many years. That's considered a resource, because what it does is it provides lessons for the teachers. We write the scope and sequence, and then we integrate into the scope and sequence those different resources that benchmark for reading is one of our resources, Orgo Math for elementary. We have a resource for every subject.
So it has skills the child can use to...
It actually has lessons that the teachers can use, and most resources nowadays are not books. They used to be books, right? But now they're pretty much online. And reading at elementary, they're pretty much still in the hands of kids, because kids need hands-on, especially when you're learning to read in K-2. Amplify is a new resource we just added for elementary reading. There's just lots of resources. I could just name and name. You don't want to hear all of them, but that's what they are. They're lessons that the teachers can actually use to instruct kids. But we don't do anything that's prescriptive, so that teachers don't have to just read straight from a resource. They get to choose and make it their own. We just provide guidance for them.
Thank you.
Look, Mr. McSillie was asking, was, say, a teacher's going to go buy their own resource. And I think what he was asking was, does anybody review that resource if they go get it on their own and present it to their class? I would be concerned that a teacher could go buy something that may not be something that would be approved by the department. Is that what you mean? Yeah, it seems like every year, there's somebody that...
So what we have in place right now for that, because that can happen, so what we have in place right now is our campuses, our teachers write lesson plans, and they, it looks different on every campus, exactly how that happens, whether it's in Canvas or there's another platform. But our campuses review lesson plans. And so lesson plans should have resources listed in them. That really is a purview of the campus to monitor that. I know on some of our campuses, even the department's heads are helping with that, especially at the high schools, because it's a big job. So that layer is there. However, there have been instances where there's been a resource that was questionable, and I'm not saying for really bad stuff. It's just, you know, maybe a math resource where it's too much gameplay and not enough really math time. And we actually have blocked some of those resources at the district level when it was necessary. So sometimes we're asked to get involved and preview or really analyze the resources, and when we're asked to do that, we do get involved in that. Does that answer the question? Kind of? I'm trying.
We just want to know that teachers aren't going to bring in some movie and play over the class. It's absolutely unfair.
And that has happened years ago. I remember as a specialist when that happened. And so really, what happens is the campus takes care of that at the campus level, but sometimes we do get involved in that just to preview, because, you know, if it does, I can pull it up, and I can look at it, too, and I can give you my professional opinion about it. Yes, ma'am. We do want to protect our kids. It's so important. Anything else? All right, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you so much.
Your fault. Yeah.
Oh, you're so welcome.
All right, thanks to both those departments. Y'all do a great job, and a lot of it's behind the scenes, but it makes a big difference, because the key word I took away is support. You know, the only thing that matters is the instruction that's happening in that classroom, and I appreciate you guys supporting that from what our teachers do for our kids. So the next thing I'd like to put out there and discuss is something that Ms. Gates and Ms. Pearson and some of the rest of the HR folks have been working on. Y'all have probably heard in the news about teacher incentive allotment. That came out a couple of years ago in a legislative session. So it's one of those options that we've been looking at for a while. It's just how do we make it fit New Caney? And so Ms. Gates has been going through that process, leading that process, and we think we have found a way to make that fit our district and really reward our teachers financially, potentially. So I'm going to turn it over to her, so she can tell you all about it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Calvert. So as Dr. Luttrell mentioned, we love acronyms, so I'm here to talk about a new one, and that's what we are referring to as TIA. As Mr. Calvert said, teacher incentive allotment. So we're really excited about this new adventure, really, for the district, and I just want to kind of give you a brief overview of the process that we've gone through and kind of where we're at. So just to answer that question, if you are not familiar with teacher incentive allotment or TIA, basically, this was developed under House Bill 3, which all started back in 2019 with the '86 legislature. And a lot of times in the news at the time, you were probably hearing them refer to opportunities for teachers to earn six-figure salaries, which that is really what everybody remembers about House Bill 3 and TIA. And so the whole point of that was to really look at how do we retain our teachers? And so they developed a system where teachers could earn what are called designations, and there are three different tiers, if you will, that they can earn based on a locally-developed system that we'll talk a little bit about. But just to kind of give you an example, because one of the first things is, well, you know, how does that look? So you have a recognized option, which is anywhere from $3,000 to $9,000 stipend that teachers would receive. They could earn an exemplary designation, which is $6,000 to an additional $18,000, and then a master level, which is your top level, $12,000 to $32,000. So if you start thinking about teacher-based salaries plus somewhere in the ballpark of a max of 32, that's how you get to that commonly referred to six-figure salary that was in the news so much. So what was, you know, our process in diving into this whole local designation system? So last year, about this time, about a year ago, we developed a district planning committee in the fall of 2022, and it involved all types of our stakeholders. We had representatives from the campuses, many of them are probably sitting in this room, our different departments, human resources department, obviously, curriculum instruction, a huge piece, which included special education, CTE, fine arts. Our finance department was also at the table, because we knew that at some point, this involves money, and we want to make sure that we're getting their input as well. And then, of course, our communications department, because how we message this and how we share the information with our teachers is going to be vitally important as well. So all of those members were part of the planning committee, and then we broke off into basically subcommittees and went forth to do the work, really looking at what are other districts across the state doing? What's going to work for New Caney? What do we want our system to look like? And so throughout the course of the year, we worked to develop different options and talk through the pros and cons of those. And then our final plan and application was submitted to the state, which is Texas Education Agency, for approval in April of 2023. And then we just found out on July 27th that our application was approved. So what is that going to look like here in New Caney? One of the things that was really important that we got feedback from, from different levels of the planning committee, was who will be eligible to participate? Which one, you know, which types of teachers will be able to earn these different designations? And so what we have written into our application is an opportunity for all teachers in New Caney ISD to have some opportunity to go through the process of collecting data and possibly earn these different levels of designations. And so to be really technical, and it's probably something that might seem a little odd, but they have to have what's called an 087 PIMS code. That's our teachers. It's intended to reward our frontline teachers who are instructing students. And so if you think about, you know, administrators, not eligible. Someone who works on the campus in a support role but not really instructing students, those folks are not eligible. It is truly intended, and it has to be written in a way where your teachers are the ones that are able to take advantage of this. So one of the questions that we often get is, well, how will we know how many of our teachers could possibly qualify? Well, there actually is no limit. What will happen is we will submit data to the state. TEA works in conjunction with Texas Tech University, and they will vet our data and analyze the data that's submitted. And if our teachers meet the criteria for the various levels, then they will earn that designation. So it's really up to how our teachers are working through the system and how our data turns out at the end of the year. But just to give you a ballpark, because, you know, one of the things I think is really important is that not all teachers will qualify for a designation, and that's part of the process. This is intended to reward our top-performing teachers. So if you look at that in terms of some statewide data, what the state tells us is, you know, about 30% of all teachers across the state should be in that recognized category, maybe about 15% is exemplary, and then the top 5% of teachers across the state in that master's level. So some numbers, just to share with you, we received an update from the state. And just as an example, last year, 22-23 school year, there were 13,700 teachers across the state of Texas that earned designations. So as more districts go through the process of submitting their application and going through data capture and submitting that data to the state, more districts are participating. But they were able to give out about $145 million in money. And just to reiterate, that is money that we will receive from the state. It's in addition to money that's already budgeted. So that's a nice feature, is that it's an opportunity for us to take advantage of additional funding from the state, and as long as those funds come from the state, we will be able to put those funds directly in teachers' hands. So the New Caney ISD system, through the process of working with that planning committee, there have to be two main components, and one is TTEST, which is teacher evaluation component. Our local plan will use the TTEST teacher evaluation as 30% of their overall ability to earn their designation. And then the second main component is you have to have a student growth measure. After discussing different options, we could have gone with pre-test, post-test, we could have gone with value-added measures, we could have gone with portfolios. We again went back to what's going to open this up to the most teachers possible, and we settled in on SLOs, which are another acronym, so Student Learning Objectives. So every teacher is already doing this. If you stop and you think about good quality instruction, you're setting a goal for your students, what you want them to accomplish by the end of the year, and by having a broad SLO option, we're going to be able to have more teachers take advantage and participate, rather than saying, we're just going to go core content. Well, if you think about that, this opens up to our special ed teachers, our CTE teachers, everything from PE, athletics, welding, you name it. If they can develop a quality student learning objective, they're going to have the option to participate in this. So we'll be working through that. Another thing, you'll see there, the National Board Certification option, that's in any district that has a TIA-approved plan. If we have teachers that obtain National Board Certification, they automatically will qualify at the recognized status, so that lower tier, but it's an automatic. That's something we'll be talking with our teachers about and future opportunities for them to obtain National Board Certification. It is quite an undertaking, I will say, but it is something that we are interested in exploring options with our teachers on. So a timeline for you, just want to reiterate that this is a multi-year process. As I said before, we went through planning all last year. This year is what we call data capture, okay? And then we will not even be ready to submit all of the data from this year until the fall of '24. And then if you look at the next spring of 2025, is when we would find out from the state which ones of our teachers have earned those designations. And then the first TIA funds would be dispersed somewhere in the summer of 2025, so it has to be done by August. So again, just want to reiterate, it is a multi-year process, because it's not that we have complete and total control. We're gathering that data, we're submitting it to the state and to Texas Tech to vet that. And so just want to reiterate that, that we're excited about the opportunity to offer this to our teachers and, you know, looking forward to kind of going through the process. But just wanted to give you an update, so you'll know. One of the things that you'll see in our policy revisions, because of TTEST being one of the components, we will have to make sure that all of our teachers are appraised and evaluated annually, which is a policy revision that you'll have for your consideration as well. Any questions? Yes?
So let's say we have a teacher that goes through the process and they get designated, one of the designations. And I know this is, we're going to use this as a retention, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So what if that teacher goes to and moves away to Dallas? And they, do they take their designation with them? Is there a probation that goes with it? I mean, do you know that?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. So once a teacher earns a designation, it is theirs for five years, and they can take it with them. Now, the amount, that's why you saw those ranges, 3,000 to 9,000 or 9,000 to 12,000. This specific amount is tied to the campus that they work at, which is going to be dependent on the socioeconomic status of the students, so that's why there's some fluctuation there. But if they earn that designation, they take it with them. But in the same regard, if we hire teachers from other districts where they're having an opportunity to earn a designation, they can still receive that. We get the funding from the state, and we disperse that to teachers that we hire that already have designations from other districts. It's portable, basically, for five years.
So do they requalify?
After five years. Yes, ma'am.
Do they bump up? Can they be dropped down?
Yes, ma'am. So they can, within the five years, they can level up, if you will. If they want to submit their data, they can go up. They don't necessarily have the opportunity to go down, but every five years, they're going to have to go back through the process to make sure that their student growth data is where it needs to be and that their teacher evaluation data is where it needs to be.
Have they given any, well, I'm asking about the state, sorry. Have they said how long they're going to support that program?
That is an excellent question, one that we have all debated and talked about quite a bit, because, you know, the biggest fear always is, how long will this be funded? And then at that point, what will happen? And so that is something that we have not heard any response to, but we felt that it's an opportunity for us to take advantage of some additional funding, and while it's there, to provide that for our teachers, so that we can be competitive and retain the best teachers and recruit the best teachers possible.
Should we give something? You know, it's really important.
Take it back. Yes, ma'am.
Anybody in there remember the path?
Career ladder, that's another, yep.
And then it just got, it's covered in the way.
Yeah.
Just under another name.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gates.
All right, thank you.
It's had a lot of work, obviously, but any opportunity that's out there for us to invest more in our people, it's definitely worth running down that road. So thank you, Ms. Gates, and your team in that committee for doing that. One final thing for me tonight, in case y'all didn't notice, we started school. We welcomed 17,872 kids the first day, and today, we're at 18,805, or I should say, as of last Friday. It's an increase of 933 kids. A lot of great things going on, a lot of challenges, of course, transportation, temperatures, whatever, the first week of school is the first week of school. But with that said, there's so much good going on. What we started three years ago is an annual first impression contest with our campuses, and it's basically that wow moment from a parent of, I am so proud to be at, and you fill in the blank. And so what we're doing tonight is we're seeing the three winners in no particular order of that contest. It's three videos, so we're going to let pictures speak louder than me. Very supportive, or very gracious to our education foundation. The winners all get Kona ice provided to them, courtesy of our education foundation. So these days, an ice cold snow cone would be very much appreciated, a car rider duty. So with no further ado, Dr. Powers is going to play our three winning videos, our schools, in no particular order, so kick back and watch some. Oh, I thought you should come in. Stand on up. All right. And then Kings Manor, Mr. Carl Allen, I know you're back there. And then Ms. Tully from Porter Elementary. All of our campuses did a great job just giving parents that warm fuzzy feeling the first day that my kid's walking into a great building with caring and loving teachers, are going to be safe, and it's going to be a great year. So thank you all for doing that. But those three, Ms. Pearson will be setting up your snow cone day with you. So y'all did a great job. Thank you. That's all I've got.
All right. Item on the agenda is the consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial, finance reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of board meeting dates, consideration of instruction report, consideration of student services items, consideration of hazardous route report, and consideration of policy updates. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? Motion been moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Item 10 on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. The time is 6:59. The board ended its closed meeting at 7:40 p.m. and will now reconvene in open session. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration of approval of district goals presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. This time of year, we always revisit our district goals just to make sure they're still relevant, accurate, and just guiding what we do as a district. So just for the sake of it, I am going to read them so that way everybody knows what they are. No particular order, like we always say. The first goal is providing high achieving student-centered programs that produce graduates who are prepared to be contributing members of our community. The second goal, provide a safe and orderly setting that enhances the teaching and learning environment for students and staff. Third goal, provide resources to support current and future student-centered programs of the district on being responsible steward of taxpayer funds. And the fourth goal is provide opportunities for parents and community members to support student achievement. We were very intentional in writing those goals. Two key words in each one of those goals, the word provide. We are a service-minded district, we're a district of action, and so that was very important to have us there. And the most important word in all four of those goals is students. Everything we do has our students' best interests at heart, and we're going to view everything through the lens of what's best for kids. So that's why those two words are intentionally put in all four goals, just asking you guys to approve those as the overarching theme of the school year.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the district goals? Motion is moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consideration of approval of 2023-2024 student handbook and code of conduct prevented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. We would ask that the board approve the 2023-2024 student handbook and student code of conduct tonight.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the 2023-2024 student handbook and code of conduct? Motion has been moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item 13 on the agenda is consider, discuss, and potentially approve the purchase of 28 plus or minus acres of real property for a future campus or other district facilities and delegate authority to the superintendent related to the negotiation and/or purchase of said property presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. This is the property as discussed in closed session.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I bid to appreciate negotiation and potential purchase of approximately 28 plus or minus acres of real property located in Montgomery County, Texas, as discussed in closed session under separate cover, and to delegate authority to the superintendent or his designee to negotiate, execute, amend, and/or terminate any agreements and closing documents relating to the purchase.
Motion's been moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Item 14 on the agenda is consideration of approval for use of Thomas Tractor Works and Jostling Construction for land clearing during all 2023 bond projects presented by Mr. Bass.
Good evening. This is a consideration for approval of these Thomas tractors. As you had mentioned, this is going to be closing out RFQ 164.23 that was previously submitted and sent out for bid. The only responding contractors were the two that are listed here, Thomas Tractor Works and Jostling Construction for Land Clearing Services. Any questions?
So these are the only two that can bid any land clearing?
Those are the only ones that responded to the RFQ.
Those two guys for 2023, though.
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
All 2023.
Bond.
For the bond.
For the bond.
But I mean, what if the bond was out 12 years and somebody, nobody can ever bid it again? It locks it down with these two guys?
Would imagine, depending on the workload that would come in, we would probably reopen the RFQ.
And we can always go out for another RFQ.
Yeah.
If we saw the workload exceeded it, we started to see some market for this, prices, whatever it may be, we always have the option to go out for another RFQ.
Yes, sir.
And they, what they give us, acre, per acre price?
No, these, currently what we did is we just, they're just on the bid list right now. We haven't, we haven't gone out to market for anything as of right now.
Thomas?
Thomas, Thomas Tractors. Yep.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion approving, is there a motion to approve using Thomas Tractor Works and Jostling Construction for land clearing during the 2023 bond? Motion's been moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Item 15 on the agenda is consideration of approval to award contract for construction manager at risk to construction managers of Southeast Texas LLC for New County High School Athletics and CTE additions and renovations presented by Mr. Bass.
Thank you. Again, this is a response to RFP 165.23 for consideration to award it to construction managers of Southeast Texas. They were vetted through a matrix scorecard to, they were the lowest bidder, they were the most qualified bid for the type of project format that we went out with the multi-phased approach on it. So through the matrix and the vetting process, we determined that they would be the best-suited CM contractor to work with us on that project. Total of four.
Rated note, are they still going to try to see if they can get us out on the south side of that feeder?
Yeah, they have, what they're, that's working with the civil packet that we're working with on them. We're trying to get a couple of options, yeah.
Get us a way out of that bottom side?
Well, we won't be able to run out on 99. There's a portion of six acre track that runs parallel to that, plus we'll have to interfere and get into TexDOT and where that, and we're talking the south end off of 99. So there is no feasible way, viable way to get safe traffic onto that frontage road at the location that would be coming out is where the off-ramp dumps directly onto that feeder. So we're looking at coming off of 494, using the existing route that we have there and building the fire lane. That's one option. We're looking at the northern part off of Beagle Drive to see if we can get outside that area as well. So we're looking at a couple of options to see how it all lays out.
So TexDOT said that we can't get, we can't drop down on the feeder?
Well, we have that, that, there's, that land is owned by someone else.
Well, just, we can go get it.
So it's, and it's got easements, and then it's, yeah.
Somebody else?
Yeah, that's, that's a totally different class. Yeah, that's a different deal.
So we have options that we're looking at, other than that one there.
Is there a motion? Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve awarding contract to construction manager at risk to construction managers of Southeast Texas LLC for New County High School Athletics and CTE additions and renovations? Motion been moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Item 16 on the agenda is consideration of approval to award contract for architectural services to VLK Architects for the three-phase New County High School extracurricular and CTE facility project, and authorize the superintendent or his designee to negotiate, finalize, and execute a contract for the project presented by Mr. Bass.
Correct. They, VLK is on currently, as of today, the contract was executed with them, the B-101, they have that. Waiting to finalize the signature on that, but they're moving forward with design and getting all the documentation that we need to get ready to issue for permits and everything. We have a meeting set up with them tomorrow to start reviewing final plans so that we can get them forwarded out to CMOS and go out to bid on them. So they're moving forward on that. So we're good in that shape as far as them getting what we need so we can go start building.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve awarding contract for architectural services to VLK Architects for the three-phase New County High School extracurricular and CTE facility project, and authorize the superintendent or his designee to negotiate, finalize, and execute a contract for the project? Motion been moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Item 17 on the agenda is consider and discuss nominations to act as a delegate at Tasby Delegate Assembly in Dallas, Texas, September 30th, 2023.
I nominate Craig Nixon.
Is there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve nominating Craig Nixon to act as the delegate at Tasby Delegate Assemblies in Texas, Dallas, Texas, September 30th, 2023? Motion been moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Item 18 on the agenda is consider and discuss nominations to act as an alternate delegate at the Tasby Delegate Assembly in Dallas, Texas, September 30th, 2023.
I will actually argue that it could be a delegate, I'll alternate, I'm like.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve nominating Ms. Perkel to act as an alternate delegate at the Tasby Delegate Assembly in Dallas, Texas? Motion has moved as seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 7:51 p.m.